Okay, so Commissioner Mayor?
Present.
Commissioner Benson?
Present.
Commissioner Freitas?
Present.
Commissioner Kraft?
Totally here.
Commissioner Lazar? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kraft, would you like to lead us in a salute to the flag? Thank you. We'll move to the approval of minutes for the July 10th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 10th meeting.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We can do probably just a roll call vote there for approval of those minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstain.
Sorry, Commissioner Lazar, did you say aye too?
No, I said abstain.
Okay. I will move on to oral communications. There are no public hearings continued. At this time would be your opportunity, if you are here to speak on behalf of something not on the agenda, you should do that now. It looks like no one in Zoom and no one here. So we'll move on to our public hearing for flood reduction and sea level rise resiliency project.
Great, okay, thank you. Good evening Commissioners, Caitlin Castellano. I am presenting the Flood Reduction and Sea Level Rise Resiliency Project. This city project is proposing various improvements to provide flood reduction and sea level rise resiliency of public infrastructure within the urbanized coastal areas of the city in order to improve the water quality into Humboldt Bay. Okay, do you just wanna just go to the next slide? Okay, thank you. Here's a bird's eye view of the project locations within four city stormwater basins, G, F, E, and the Palco Marsh Basin. Click. The proposed project was developed through community engagement as part of the Eureka Area Watershed's Storm Water Resource Plan. Click. And is included in the North Coast Integrated Regional Water Management Plan. Click. The project has also been included in the Streets and Storm Drains section of the city's Capital Improvement Program, that's CIP, since 2020. More detailed information on the project's purpose and need is included in your staff report and the environmental document. Next slide. Click. Zooming in closer, you can see the various project areas. The blue line represents the coastal zone boundary and the light blue overlay represents areas within the 100-year flood zone. Most project components are located within street segments and intersections throughout the city, and their specific locations are described in your staff report. Click. Proposed improvements include, click, replacing undersized storm drains, piping and culverts, click, yeah, installing tide gates, installing low-impact development features such as stormwater management measures and rain gardens, trash capture devices, and also limited earthwork within Palco Marsh to increase its stormwater capacity and enhance its tidal system. Next, click. The construction is anticipated to begin in late spring, early summer 2024 and take eight to 12 months. Next slide. Go ahead and click it. The project components in the coastal zone constitute development. Click. Requiring a coastal development permit authorization. All proposed improvements within the coastal zone are located in the city's CDP permitting authority except for the improvements within Palco Marsh, which are located within the California Coastal Commission's Coastal Development Permitting Authority. Therefore, a CDP will be processed separately by the Coastal Commission for work within Palco Marsh. City approval of the CDP and all other project components are appealable to the California Coastal Commission. And additionally, although no use permit is required to implement all of the project components, there is, a use permit is needed for the Palco Marsh component because it is located within a natural resource zone in the city and enhancements for fish and wildlife habitat values are a conditional use. So that requires a conditional use permit. Furthermore, the inland zoning code does not apply to projects and outside of the coastal zone. Therefore, no discretionary permit is required for the project components in the inland zoning portion. Lastly, there was a Sequel initial study that was required for the project. Next slide. So an initial study was prepared pursuant to the provisions of Sequel and reflects the city's independent judgment and analysis. Click. It concluded that with mitigation, no substantial adverse environmental impact will result from the proposed project. Therefore, a mitigated negative declaration and, click, a mitigated mitigation monitoring and reporting program was prepared. The initial study mitigated negative declaration, which I'll call IS-MMD here on out, was routed for a 30-day public comment period in mid-June. So we did have a newspaper, we published a newspaper ad on June 14th for 30 days, and it was also uploaded to SequelNet. All the resource agencies were notified. We did only receive one comment letter, official comment letter, from the State Clearinghouse Review, and that was from Caltrans. So that led us to believe that the city and the Public Works, we'll talk about it more later, but that we did a good job coordinating with the other resource agencies. Let's go, yep, thank you. On August 10th, the addendum to your planning commission staff report was emailed to you because we did need to add in a RADA to clarify where some of the spoils would go from Palco Marsh. And it was my understanding, and Public Works can elaborate on this as well, that the resource agencies, that was one of their ideas, I think the Coastal Conservancy, to take those spoils and put it in other areas of the marsh to help restore the areas that were subsiding. So the RADA is necessary, oh, I already talked about that, sorry to clarify, the excavated material from Palco Marsh. And, next slide, thank you. So yeah, here's a map of it, if next, click, please. The yellow is the expanded project area where the spoils could go, or initially in the initial study, it was just in the red project area. So next slide. So our recommendation is to hold a public hearing and to adopt the resolution adopting the mitigated negative declaration, the mitigation monitoring and reporting program in response to comments and RADA and approving the project. We have a suggested motion, but we can stop screen sharing. And Public Works is here to clarify any concerns as well.
Public Works would like to speak to the comments that were received today. Is that all right?
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, planning commission. It's nice to be here with you guys tonight to talk about this project. This project's been a long, a long time in the making. It was originally developed when we did a stormwater resource plan. It was our highest-ranked project in that plan. That plan was based on a multiple criteria scoring matrix that looked at benefits to stormwater in the area. And this was the project that came to be the most highly ranked out of that. And so we pursued funding for the project and originally were successful in procuring a FEMA flood reduction project or flood reduction grant. And from that grant, we were able to secure two additional grants of upwards, you know, total project value around $8 million. So we brought a lot of grant dollars to the table, both federal and state dollars here to try to get at some of these issues in the city with flooding, with water quality, trash capture, and... Yeah, that's primarily it there. Oh yeah, sea level rise, of course. Sea level rise, that was the fourth one, sea level rise adaptation. The project addresses two of our largest basins in the city. These are also two of the basins that are down in the very center kind of industrial area of the city and hence the need for trash capture, they're priority trash capture areas in the city. A lot of trash gets into the bay through these areas. So this is an opportunity for us to get some funding to put in these very large, expensive trash capture devices down there to, at the very bottom end of the system where we can gather all this trash and be able to keep that from going into the bay. The project is not without challenges. The project, our waterfront is historically been an industrial area. There's contamination that's been associated with those industrial practices throughout the entire waterfront. That's one of the, certainly one of the constraints with the project. Additionally, one of the outfalls is at Palco Marsh, one of the nicer resources in the city when it comes to our natural habitats. And with that, we really wanted to make a focus on that area and make sure that we had good engagement with our, with our resource partners, the permitting agency, the resource agencies. So in December, we had a meeting with all the permitting agencies and resource agencies in the area. We met and visited the site, had a discussion with them about the project and about, in particular, about the entire project, but also really focused in on Palco Marsh area and that outfall and how the project was going to change where things were going as far as stormwater runoff in the city. I know that Caitlin brought up a couple, like, specific points and we're gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to our consultant who worked in the project, Brett Vivian. He is kind of our technical expert on a lot of what we did, and we covered a lot of ground when it comes to not only the contamination associated with the area, but then also marsh hydraulics, vegetation, all these things that you need to take in consideration when you're taking on a project of this magnitude. Brett's here on Zoom, and my hope is that we can have him come in and address some of the comments that came through in our comment letter earlier.
Sure, thanks, Jesse. So we received some, some comments from Humboldt Bay Keeper and really good comments, you know, largely focused, well, on kind of three categories. One being kind of what, what City Engineer brought up about contaminated soils and groundwater. The second part about being water quality and habitat of Palco Marsh. And then the third being outreach to resource agencies. And so, you know, as is standard with, with large projects and working in any potentially contaminated area, you know, a Phase 1 corridor assessment is completed. And then following that, once you've kind of identified the project, more narrow project footprint and the different areas of concern of Phase 2 that involves soil sampling at various locations so that you can characterize the soils, kind of understand what the contaminant concentrations are, and that takes place. And so SHN completed those for the, for the project. And the results of those studies, the Phase 2 in particular, the recommendation kind of being for additional sampling during construction. What we noticed in this report was that the lab results for a lot of these soils, the contamination concentrations were below the environmental screening levels by the water board. So very low levels because we wanted to understand, you know, what is the exposure risk to the workers? And then what is the exposure risk for off-site disposal of those materials and where we might be able to take them? So we did do a little additional analysis that will be reported in a groundwater and soil management plan, soil and groundwater management plan, sorry. And so that will be, we're working on that right now, but the test results indicate that really largely clean materials in and around Palco, Palco Marsh, where we sampled and within the street of Del Norte Street, and then also in Palco Marsh. So that soil and groundwater management plan will go to the regional water board for approval, for kind of advanced approval for how to work with those soils. And then in all the other areas where there's disturbance, we'll, we'll focus on how to best manage that groundwater and the soil through testing. And then the other part is the impacts to water quality and habitat within Palco Marsh. During our site visit, the Coastal Commission in particular and the regional board had a lot of questions about water quality and habitat within Palco Marsh and how the project might affect those, the habitat there. So we received some, some comments from the regional board. They were consistent with what the coastal, what we heard from the Coastal Commission in the field. And then we also reached out to the state Coastal Conservancy, who owns it easement over, over Palco Marsh. And then we worked with, with those agencies and we developed a tech memo to kind of review the, the project and the water quality and habitat effects. And, you know, largely, it's especially working with the, with the state Coastal Conservancy. You know, we were able to make some improvements. The RADA, the RADA that was spoken of before was one of those specific improvements to reuse, reuse those sediments. So kind of knowing that we had very low levels and we could reuse those sediments, we can apply that on the marsh plain, keep up with sea level rise, and maintain Palco Marsh as a healthy marsh ecosystem. And then, you know, kind of went through all the details of working with the Conservancy to get their support for the, for the project and, you know, really landing on where they feel like this project is, is a, can be a benefit to Palco Marsh in the future to better manage that marsh for, for sea level rise and for habitat. And there were a lot of details that we could get into, happy to answer questions on that. And then, yeah, and then just the, the third point is the reaching out to the, to the agencies. So, you know, largely the regional board and the Coastal Commission and the state Coastal Conservancy had their questions about water quality and habitat. And then the other agencies, National Marine Fisheries Service, Army Corps of Engineers, CD, and CDFW, didn't have too many comments, largely kind of just alluded to the removal of the, of trash with, by implementing trash capture devices and kind of indicated their support for the, for the project and didn't have too many detailed questions about the habitat. So that's kind of the general response to, to those comments, I think. Yeah, just to summarize is that we will be doing a, we're developing a soil and groundwater management plan that will be submitted to the, to the regional board. There is a detailed memorandum that goes over the water quality and habitat within Palco Marsh and largely gained support from the state Coastal Conservancy for the benefits of the project to Palco Marsh. And we will continue to do outreach to the resource and permitting agencies.
Thank you for that report and the additional information. I'll bring it back to the commissioners for questions for staff.
All right, the chairperson is looking at me, so people expect questions from me. So I have just a few questions, but I want to make a comment first. Great presentation, Senior Planner Castellano, and for our consultants, cities consultants, GHD, Kerry McNamie and Brett Vivian, you know, really good job on the environmental documentation. It kept all of us reading for a long time. There was about 800 pages to review before, before this, this meeting. If you looked at everything, all the addenda and all that, so, so good job. I really liked the goals, you know, they really conform with, with the general plan and with LUP and adds a lot of value to the city, and there's, there's almost no harm and much help. And, you know, talking to people outside of this, this meeting, there doesn't seem to be a lot of opposition to this. Seems to be general support. There's always going to be questions, and so I'll start with a couple of mine. One thing I noticed in the, in the, in the report is that the thresholds of significance for the pollutants aren't, aren't well described, or, you know, so there was all kinds of tables that said what the, you know, what the kinds of pollutants were found and, and at what levels, but there wasn't a lot of verbiage about how significant those numbers were. And maybe I just missed it in all that reading, but, but it's, it's always helpful to, to see a column that shows the thresholds of significance for those pollutants. So we know, we heard from, from Brett Vivian, from GHD, that they're, that they're almost non-detect or so low that they're not really as significant. So thank you for, for bringing that in, but that wasn't clear from the reading. Just an engineering question, are the tide gates that are going to be put in, are they going to be, are they going to be top hinge tide gates? Are they going to be side hinge tide gates? Are they going to have habitat doors that allow some tidal exchange or, or species migration? Can you tell us a little bit more about the tide gates?
Yeah.
Either Jesse Willer or Brett Vivian, whoever wishes.
Two Brett and I will, will be able to answer your question. Yeah, the, the new tide gates have been designed to, a big part of their design was to help address sea level rise. So I believe they will be a top hinge style tide gate, but they'll be adjustable. So that'll allow us to kind of throttle the flow rates as sea levels, as sea levels change. That's one of the benefits there, and which, which has a kind of a net benefit in the marsh in that right now, the way the, those elevations are set through that existing outfall, there's, it can only discharge so low in elevation, so you get less of a flushing effect of the sediments that accumulate in there. And so that's part of the reason, it's part of, one of the issues in there. It also allows, with the, with the tide gates, and maybe Brett can correct me if I'm speaking wrong on this matter, with the hinging mechanism of the tide gate, but the, the orientation of the tide gates will also allow for lower velocities through the pipe, which will allow for more interchange of fish to be able to move back and forth between one side to the other. Brett, did I get that right as far as the, the hinge of the tide gate?
Yeah, so I, I guess I would just add the clarity that, so the, the crossing from Palco Marsh to Humboldt Bay, we're increasing the size of those pipes and we're putting tight adjustable tide gates on there to give better hydraulic controls at Palco Marsh. It allows more water to flow out and it maintains a similar tidal regime as it is now so that with sea level rise, the city can adjust those tide gates so that Palco Marsh doesn't drown. And then we can combat some of that with, with some of the placement of sediment so that that marsh can keep up with sea level rise. In other areas of the project, there are other tide gates, but those are within the storm drain pipes tucked back from, from the shoreline, and those would be standard top hinge side gates. And there's no habitat upstream, so, so those would not be adjustable or with habitat doors. Those would be pretty standard tide gates. But at Palco Marsh, that's the special consideration where we're allowing more stormwater to flow out faster than it does now, even though there's more stormwater coming into Palco Marsh. But then also gives more hydraulic controls to, to manage for, for sea level rise and if the, yeah, and future projects that could be restoration-based.
Thank you, both Project Engineer Jesse Willer and Brett Vivian from GHD. I guess I still have a question about the adjustability in increasing tidal, partial or muted tidal prism and the, the ability to create more brackish, valuable brackish habitat? Or is this really designed to protect the stormwater system from backwater effects so that more of it's available during rain events, just letting out fresh water, but really not letting saltwater in? Or are they designed specifically to allow some modica more adjustable to let some, some mixing happen in terms of creating brackish habitat?
Yeah, so the, the idea is to maintain a similar brackish habitat that, that's there and not increase freshwater and, and stormwater and the kind of detention time of stormwater within Palco Marsh.
Okay, great, thank you. That answers those questions. I'm pleased with the answers too. Here's my last question before I turn it over to any other commissioners with questions, or the chair does. How, how would the Palco, the changed Palco Marsh hydraulics impact the, the recent mitigation that was done as Caltrans mitigation to the railroad marsh? I know that's a little bit south of, of your work area, but, I mean, just within a half a football field. So I just wondered what that impact was going to be.
Yeah, so Jesse could potentially add, add detail to this, but to the south, so the, the roadway Vigo, it kind of acts as a somewhat of a hydraulic barrier between, between Palco Marsh and the, and the marshes to the south. So we wouldn't expect any interaction there. But in the future, with any sort of restoration projects, you know, to maintain a similar tidal regime, what you would want to do is be able to increase the tidal prism that comes in to, to interact with, with those marshes. So that's a, you know, one of the benefits of this project is that you'd have those hydraulic controls to allow that to happen. But in the near term and right after the project is built, I wouldn't expect any interactions between this project or effects of this project to the, to the work that Caltrans has done.
Yeah, Jesse, I know you're going to address this a little better. What I, what I really meant by the railroad marsh was, and impacts were the two new culverts that were put, put in from the north-south drain, which you guys call the park, the Palco Park Drain, which then allows water to enter into what had been a stagnant and a marsh because the, the culverts had plugged, and so new culverts have gone in. And so I'm just, so there's goals for that that Caltrans is counting on? And so I'm just wondering if there's any impacts?
Excuse me, there should be, like you said, they are, they are connected by, by pipes there, and we don't expect to see significant impacts there. I know that that habitat has been questionable at best, you know, I think it's not in great habitat. I know that we're hoping through this project, you know, through, not just this project's ability to help with the, the marsh itself and how it hydraulically, you know, clears itself out, but also through, you know, looking forward to the future and being able to get at some restoration projects further to that direction to the south there between this site and Bay Shore Mall. The outfall should help with those, and I think in the meantime, there might be some slight modification to those water surface elevations, but I don't believe we're intending to have higher water surface elevations. It would push, it might be a longer duration, but it probably wouldn't be extremely long. And I, I don't believe we would have, we anticipate any like flooding or impacts to habitat there. I'm thinking, the habitat that I know of that place is like Fragmities was one of the major constituents.
Yeah, and it was hypersaline, and it actually needed more tidal flushing. So this sounds like it's going to improve it to me, but I just wanted to hear it from somebody's mouth other than my own head.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Any further questions?
I have a drainage question, and I'm not an expert, so either Jesse or Brett can handle this. I note in the, in the discussion in the MND, there's a section that talks about the acres of area that are receiving runoff. So it compares the pre-project conditions at 396 acres and then the post would be 685. So I guess in thinking about how that changes the dynamics in Palco Marsh and then thinking about the kind of dynamic system in terms of the exchange with the bay, I heard earlier Brett talking about how there not being a change in the concentration of freshwater to saltwater. As a result, it would be kind of maintained. And can, can one of you kind of explain why that works and how that is achieved or what, what's responsible for that?
Yeah, so, so that is, that is kind of the, the crux of the question and certainly the comments that we received from the, from the Coastal Commission, state Coastal Conservancy and, and the regional board. Yeah, regarding if you're increasing the volume of stormwater and the, the flow or the discharge to Palco Marsh, how does that not change it within Palco Marsh? And, you know, the, the answer to that is by increasing the ability for Palco Marsh to discharge the water from Palco to Humboldt Bay. So flow currently comes in through, from, from Del Norte Street. There's a, there's a storm drain structure there, and it's a very sluggish, I guess for lack of a better term, sort of system. Stormwater comes in there, the, the existing crossing is, is pretty small. And the crossing from Palco Marsh out to the bay, so it slowly discharges out, out to the bay. By increasing the size of that structure and then affixing the, the tide gates that are, that are adjustable, we allow Palco Marsh to discharge the water more quickly. So ultimately, if you think of it in detention time, the stormwater, even though there's more stormwater that comes into Palco Marsh, it leaves Palco Marsh quicker than it it leaves Palco Marsh quicker than it does in existing conditions. And so basically, by upsizing the system downstream, we can we can effectively have no change to the kind of concentrations and and how storm water flows through there and actually see an improvement. So in large storm events, what we see when we talk about like the the ten-year storm, it would take several tidal cycles for the in under existing conditions for storm water to exit Palco Marsh. But with the increased size of the tide gates and lowering that outlet, the elevation it goes out, it can be achieved in one to two tidal cycles to get the storm water out.
I would just I would just add a little bit to what Brett said there in that, you know, we also, one of the one of the comments and items that we worked through with the resource agencies was like trying to the grading in the marsh would help actually cycle tidal water in and out. Because right now, if you look out there, there's there's some channels, then there's some cross ditches, there's some berms. It's, you know, kind of not really like a naturally graded system. So working with CDFW, we kind of came up with a game plan, Brett and his team and CDFW about like how how to like achieve through grading a way to to easier flush that kind of northern end of the system so that it it kind of comes and goes easier and it isn't chopped up and and blocked by more man-made, I guess, you know, relics from the past.
I guess another question I had is more just, I think the comments we received from Baykeeper questioned the prudence of discharging storm water into wetlands. And it sounds, it seems to me like the that's an existing condition to a certain extent that we're not introducing storm water in an area that doesn't already receive it. Is that a fair characterization? We're maybe increasing the volume of storm water, but not storm water. Okay, that that's helpful to nail down. And I guess the last part would just be about, so I heard Brett talk about the forthcoming soil and groundwater management plan. And I guess I'd just ask, is it appropriate to not have that at this juncture in taking action on the project, given that there has been phase one and phase two sampling? I think in particular, I guess to the point that seemed to be most sharply worded or not, I won't say that. But the the most specific point I see in the Baykeeper comments is the LID features and the potential for mobilizing or remobilizing contaminants during that element. Do you have any thoughts or, you know, can you can you speak to that about moving forward ahead of those things being?
Yeah, I'll I'll give you my my thoughts on it. Yeah, the so primarily, we focus the LID features in the upper end of the watershed where we don't have that historic industrial contamination because, you know, digging up more of the ground than we needed to would would raise that potential. So what we have in the lower area is primarily the the large trash capture devices that are at the very bottom end of the basin so that we can capture any trash that goes into the inlets or gets into the system. So we can get that out of the get that out of the bay. So those are the and then the outfall structures themselves, the tide gates and the outfall structures. Those are going to be our excavations as well as the pipe, the the large pipe that runs down Del Norte. Brett can correct me if I'm wrong on any of that. But those LID features are primarily up in the neighborhood parts of the watershed. That's when I, I guess that's what I mean by up in the watersheds. They're up more, I guess, to the to the south and and east.
In areas that weren't identified as contaminated.
Correct.
And I guess to your to the the other question that was posed about sequencing, it it is standard to do the phase one and the phase two complete sequa. And then, you know, as we're applying for for permits, you know, and working with the Regional Board, the really the Soil and Groundwater Management Plan is more of a pre-construction plan. And then that's giving the contractor the direction of of how to deal with things. And that's why we're doing the, we did the additional soil sampling to characterize those soils. And ultimately, we'll seek the water boards, you know, written approval that our our plan as to how we will handle soil and groundwater during construction, you know, to avoid any any sort of additional or any sort of impacts offsite. You know, they concur with that and approve it.
Thanks, that's all I have for now.
I don't have any questions of my own, but Commissioner Benson, you had a first question about thresholds of significance for contamination. Do you feel like that was adequately addressed through what we've heard here? I just wanted to bring that back in case you wanted to get closure on that.
Yeah, it it's adequately addressed for me to take a take a vote tonight. I I think it's a recommendation would be to to put that if there's ever going to be a revised version of the IS MND that to make that clear in the writing.
Okay.
I do have another another question. First, I I just want to congratulate Senior Engineer Willer and Brett Vivian on on figuring out the puzzle of storm drainage, all that relic storm drainage down there between the, you know, between the unidirectional pipes and the bidirectional pipes, the ones that are half-plugged and the ones that are fully plugged and the vaults they get into and the inverted siphon. I mean, it's this, it's kind of a, it's tricky business down there and you it seems like you've figured it out. So congratulations, I think you may be the first people in in twenty years who've really figured it out because it's been additive. You know, I learned in in Sesame Street a long time ago when I was a kid, right? You know, that the solution to pollution is is dilution, right? And it seems that this project is is really doing that, you know, creating more volumetric capacity in Palco Marsh and putting discharging storm water into it. I mean, it's certainly the best of the three alternatives. I appreciate the the memo that Brett Vivian from GHD sent us kind of late this afternoon just to tell more about the process of having prioritized and you elucidated on that on that more. And I'm, you know, I'm very, very supportive of the LID detention and the trash capture devices. But neither of those things do a whole lot to address the relic pollutants, especially in in the Simpson Channel, the furins and the dioxins that that are in there. You're you're kind of putting them at the top of the watershed. And then there's kind of this large, you know, almost like the Arcata Marsh, like tertiary treatment, biological treatment of what goes into Palco Marsh. But it seems like in some of those lower industrial reaches, it's more like we hope it doesn't erode a lot in here. We hope the BMPs are good. And there there's, you know, a little, so I just wondered if there was any thoughts on doing some more in-channel remediation in those more former industrial areas or or increasing more tidal flow? If if, you know, if the solution to pollution is is dilution, is there any way to get more water in in there and slowly scour and flush out some some of the contaminants? You know, and also create more brackish habitat. And we understand a lot about brackish habitat and its and its productivity and its ability to to chew up and digest a lot of toxins in a in a way that freshwater marsh and pure saltwater marsh doesn't. It's a kind of a special habitat. So I've just I'm just wondering if there's any thoughts about adding that to this project or whether there's in fact some thinking about that in this project that I just didn't wasn't clear to me.
I'll try to address that one 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 piece at a time. The, you know, one of the challenges with working in Eureka's waterfront is it's it's very historically, you know, it was a lumber town. You know, there's TP burners, there's all sorts of past practices all along the entire waterfront, historic dumps. You know, there's different things all through there. It's it's very challenging and very expensive when you start talking about having to truck material out and and, you know, remove contaminants and that sort of thing. We tried to approach the project with getting at all of our, you know, all the very specific benefits that we wanted to get out of this benefits, all the benefits that we had in the Stormwater Resource Plan that we, you know, applied for in our grants, you know, that we really wanted to hit all those as much as we can. And at some point, we have to, and I'm not saying that we didn't think about these things, but it's really hard to draw the line on where we stop the, where do we stop trying to go after? It's, you know, it's like all along, it's all along the bay. So we really tried to focus on, you know, when we when we started this with the flood reduction and the sea level rise adaptation, the trash, the trash removal, water quality enhancements. And then and we've had a, you know, honestly, with the budget, we're we're tight on, we've been, we've been struggling with the budget. So I'm not going to go too much more into that, but I guess to answer your question, we've definitely seen some things we've been told by some of our consultants, like, don't go over there because as soon as you open that up, it's like, you know, a can of worms when you go in that direction over there. So we've tried to be thoughtful about avoiding areas where there are there, you know, where there's known concentrations that have been problems in the past. We're going to be trying, you know, we're very much conscious of, you know, when you say like erosion and making sure that we're not trying to open something up so that it, you know, creates a bigger problem in the future. I don't know if I'm quite answering all of your questions.
I would add that Public Works is working on exploring future how this, what's going to happen to this marsh in the future with sea level rise? And they've done some initial work on that, and they're getting a scope of work from GHD to do initial analysis on that. So I feel like this is really a first step, like an eight million dollar first step. But there's, we know there's a lot more to be done to ensure that the marsh like continues to keep up with sea level rise. And there's a lot of future projects to explore.
Yeah, and I'll expand. Thank you, Kristen. You know, on the on the sea level rise portion of that, we've, we're looking at a doing a like a coastal resource plan, a coastal resiliency plan, excuse me, where we take our last iteration was a capital improvement program, sea level rise, resiliency planning effort. So we're going to take, we want to take that next step, which is to get into some of those things that were identified from a, from a, you know, capital infrastructure for the city standpoint and expand upon the planning for those. So that's our hope, you know, as far as, you know, we're talking about Palco Marsh, but for the entire waterfront of the city, but also Palco Marsh specifically, because there's a lot going on here. And it's it's honestly one of the great opportunities the city has to for an enhancement and and to really expand that area and, you know, you know, create even a better, a better system as you kind of, you know, with more interchange of salt water. So that's that's generally the direction we're going, but we're we're working towards it.
Thank you, Jesse, and thank you, Director Kenyon, for for elucidating more. You know, from the from my perspective up on the dais, you know, we we marvel at what staff is doing with bringing in three million here and five million here and eight million here. And of course, how do we not want, you know, more to get done with that? I have no plans on holding your this project or this IS MND hostage to other things that need to be done. I understand that that will be done over time. But I but I also didn't see a lot of language in the in the IS MND sort of saying that that we plan on doing that as a later effort to deal more with the relics. And and that includes the Fragmities, which is, you know, ninety percent removed in the last since twenty nineteen really successfully, but ten percent is still there. And also the the Spartina, even though the the tables and GHD's work, you know, showed elevations where Spartina exists, but it really didn't give us a really talk about how much Spartina, all I have to do is walk out there and you see that there's, you know, about a forty percent cover of Spartina. So it's substantial in there and and, you know, what 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 is being done in this project, even in the footprint of the work areas, you know, to to remove that and just do it, you know, chew at it a little bit at a time was a little bit for me lacking in in this, how to how to how to use every opportunity when you have heavy equipment out there to get a little bit done, you know, and in little enough projects. And maybe it's a smaller project at that. So that's that's my only comment on on that. I'm really, really done with questions.
All right.
And I I think this is more for maybe others, well, my benefit too. But it seems like what we have in some of the other comments we received was concern about the lack of formal written responses that are in the public record from agencies. So to try to characterize what's happened to date, which lies outside of the record, Brett alluded to the meeting that occurred in December, December first, it sounds like twenty twenty-two. And that was a sort of familiarization, kind of kickoff, maybe a meeting or something like that. So there was formal referrals sent and then circulation of the environmental document. Can can you characterize, I guess, to the to the folks at home and to us here, kind of what the nature of the discussions have been, what the principal concerns are, not not getting the great granular detail, but just what are the things that have already been covered through revisions to the project design before the MND was circulated? And what are things that were brought up at the site visit and discussed and hammered out, I guess? That would be helpful to understand, maybe.
Yeah, it's the memo that we gave you today is really a response to the questions we got. So you can kind of tell from that, but it was like, what are the alternatives to this? And how will it impact the marsh vegetation and water salinity? And all the things that the GHD memo was talking about were all responses to the questions that we received.
Questions verbally during.
Verbally received, yeah. Yeah, I, you know, it's not, it's it's not required that we include all comments like that aren't official comments and also just felt like it would be confusing because so much has happened verbally that the written comments would be out of context because we've had these site visits and phone conversations in addition to emails.
I think where people get a little nervous is they they look to written comments to ratify that like, oh, our concerns were addressed through the early consultation and we're we're, we support the project as designed or something. You know, that's a nice way of kind of closing the circle on the agency involvement. So without that, it kind of, you know, makes you wonder, you know. And so it's helpful for you to connect the dots on the technical response.
And we've heard loud and clear from Baykeeper now that she really, they really want the the phase two document to see it ahead of time. And we will make that a point from going forward.
Oh, the phase two assessment for contamination, yeah.
I think that was part of the problem, too, is that wasn't included in the packet.
Yeah, that seems fitting, especially in cases where, you know, hazardous materials. And I think the biggest thing that stands out to me, I just looked at some of the Schuster photos is based the Hammond's Mill that lies immediately north of the Del Norte, Del Norte's extension to the bay, you know, that was a very large mill with a lot of footprint and likely contamination, given its duration of use. And so I I think it's not inconceivable in the phase one context that contamination exists in some of the areas targeted for groundwater service. But not enough to where I'm nervous about the strategy that's been outlined for addressing it. So thanks.
Looks like we're clear. We'll move into a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak in regards to this project, now would be your time. I don't see anyone on Zoom and I don't see anyone else here. So we'll close the public hearing and return to Commissioners for motion and action.
Could we have the motion brought up on the screen?
Yes, sorry.
Oh, my gosh.
There we go, sorry.
I will make the motion. I move the Planning Commission adopt a resolution adopting a mitigated negative declaration, mitigation monitoring and reporting program and response to comment and errata, and conditionally approve the conditional use permit and coastal development permit for the food reduction and sea level rise resiliency, sorry, flood reduction and sea level rise resiliency project.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion or suggested changes?
I don't know if I want to suggest these as changes because I because I think the IS MND stands, you know, stands pretty well. But in the section mandatory findings of significance, where where it's supposed to, where the the document describes other projects as looking at cumulative impacts, you know, overall, and they included, you know, Fish Passage projects at M and N. They they included Second Street, Second Slough, excuse me, Fish Passage, the Beta Zoo Trail and 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 some other big city projects, but it didn't include the Caltrans mitigation. Um, the Beta Zoo Trail and, and, and some other big city projects, but it didn't include the Caltrans mitigation projects in Palco Marsh specifically. Um, dealing with Fragmites removal and the Railroad Marsh hydro modification, those seem super relevant um, to me. And, and there was attendant studies done for the CDP application nine dash seventeen dash oh four zero eight. Um, relative to that and, and, and in the literature cited, I didn't see streamlined planning, soil and re-vedge assessment of twenty fourteen. I didn't see the Palco Marsh Restoration Plan ever cited or, or discussed. Um, that's a twenty nineteen plan done by Samara Restoration. Um, so there, it, it just seemed, you know, really good. But, you know, I'm not going to use the, the word incomplete, um, just maybe. A, a few things that I would have liked to see in there to, to be more comfortable, because I'm. I've, I've seen the planning commission, you know, I think we've been tasked to look at ISMNDs and MMPs and, and sort of certify them and move them forward. And, and some of them are, have been three quarters baked or four fifths baked, like good, good efforts. And, and the city seems to take this, this approach of, of saying. What, what they're going to do if they run into toxics or contaminants, et cetera, but, but we also, and that's good. You know, I appreciate giving flexibility, making sure those documents have a lot of flexibility. But sometimes there's things that are known, like the city got a grant some, I think, four, four or five years ago to study all the contaminants on the waterfront. And so there's some things that are really known and so, and not all those things are brought forward in this document. And so I, so sometimes I wonder, um, you know, how much to just keep flexibility or to drill down into what's known and make sure that that's represented. Because I don't, you know, I, I worry as a planning commissioner too, and I'm certifying something um, that uh. That could, a better version could be, could be created, but is there enough flexibility? Does it check enough boxes, you know, to get there? I don't, I don't want to get caught up in details or, like I said, hold the document hostage to, you know, minutia. Um, especially at this point when so much work has gone into it, but that's, that's sort of my last, um, my last comment. Um, I, I am ready to support this and, and vote on it.
So no changes to the.
So, so all that verbiage for no changes.
Okay, great. So, um, we will, that will call that the discussion and I'd like to call for a vote. You want to do roll call vote?
Sure. Excuse me, um, let's see, Commissioner Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner Freitas?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
And Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you. It looks like that is all for our public hearings. We have no old business, but a couple items of new business. Which is the first, if there is discussion for the change of the meeting. I don't know how any of you felt about it. I kind of chatted with people earlier um, in the year. And I think Wednesday actually wasn't a great day for some of you, but it was the only day, other day available. So Mondays are just a really tough day for me and so I thought I'd throw it out there because I know it, it had been for others as well.
I think I could do it.
One of those Wednesdays?
Yeah, I think that would be fine, doesn't conflict with um, Arcata Council, so I just checked, so we're good there.
I'm good with Wednesdays as well.
Yeah, I, I, I have stuff going on every night of the week, except for Friday, Saturday and Sunday, which is, so. And I'm sure that this commission doesn't want to meet on a Friday, Saturday or Sunday night, but that's really the only free nights for me. So I have to, I have to change something in my schedule for any change. Um, but that's also true of Mondays. I teach Monday evenings from five to seven, uh, Monday and Wednesday, so. I bring my class here. This is the learning, this is the living classroom, right? So, so.
Thank you for bringing that up.
I'm flexible on Wednesday, I could do that.
And I can do Wednesday, but I can't do the third Wednesday.
It looks like we have the option of the second or the fourth.
Yeah, so, um, and it seems like the fourth would be problematic because some months wouldn't have maybe a fourth Wednesday, or am I crazy? Might be better to have it where it's guaranteed.
I, where, yeah.
Yeah, you're going to run up against like Thanksgiving and stuff with, on that Wednesday as well, so the second Wednesday is a little bit better.
Okay. If someone would like to make a motion to, there's a suggestive motion at the bottom there. Oh, yeah.
Oops.
So we'll open it to a public hearing, is what you're saying to me?
Yeah, it just happened.
Okay, yeah, no problem. And we'll close it. Thank you. Thank you. If you could pull that motion back up.
Okay, I'll make the motion, I guess. I move the planning commission adopt to change its current regular meetings from the second Monday of each month at five thirty. PM to the second Wednesday of each month at five thirty PM. And to amend the planning commission's bylaws to support this change.
I'll second that.
We want to specify when it becomes effective, like the next meeting?
That was going to be my question.
I amend my motion to include effective for the regular meeting of September.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I, I have a question. What, what problem are we fixing in doing this? Maybe that wasn't clear to me.
Oh, I, Mondays are a horrible day for me to be here. And so then I think I noticed that you were teaching on Mondays and there had been discussion before that. It wasn't always a great day, so I thought I would throw it out to see and it seems like that works for people.
Okay, um, yeah, it's Monday and I, I, I teach Monday and Wednesday night, so it, it presents a problem either way, but. It wouldn't if it, if this was effective in January, because then I can plan my teaching schedule to fit this. So it's, you know, we're just starting a semester and I've just put out my syllabus and the schedule and so it's like, now it's sort of. It's going to take a lot to, to change it. Um, so that's, I would be more supportive of it if it was effective in the new year, but. Uh, I'll find a way to make it work if, if we want to start it in September.
And I'm also happy to re-amend my amended motion to make it effective January at the pleasure of the commission.
While y'all are thinking, who was the second on that motion? Thank you, Michael.
Does that seem doable or, or not as much? If we had to wait, I guess that's five or six months before we would change. I'm not sure how much of an issue that would be for you.
Yeah, I mean, the sooner the better would be for me, but if he's saying that it's kind of the January would be best, I certainly can. Continue on this path.
In the middle of November.
Yeah, that would be fine with me too. You pick a month.
November.
Great.
I amend my motion to um, strike uh, effective at the September meeting. And instead make it the November meeting to uh, give Commissioner Benson a bit of time to rearrange his class schedule.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, and we'll move on to appointment of ad hoc committee to discuss vacation rental regulations. Okay, that's me. So, a question has been, what's, what's planning commission's role? And um, it's definitely within planning commission's role to make recommendations to city council on legislative matters. That's one of your main functions. And so the typical steps for going about that is the chair would appoint a committee with no more than two uh, planning commission members. Um, the committee would form a written recommendation, bring that back to the planning commission so that everybody could vote on the recommendation to support it. And then um. The report would be agendized for a city council meeting. They have a standing item on their agendas for board and commission reports. And then a planning commissioner would make that report to council on behalf of the entire commission.
Is that the full report?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, so it, yeah, definitely has come up. Are there people interested in being a member of the committee?
Uh, I would be, I'm interested enough if there's somebody who's truly, if there are two people truly passionate or a lot more knowledgeable, I will happily defer. But I would be willing to serve on this. I, I kind of feel it.
I have a question for staff. Um, would it be appropriate, like I personally don't have an interest in being on the uh, committee, but I do think that. It would be helpful if I could provide like comments or questions to the ad hoc committee for them to consider. Just because I think, you know, Commissioner Lazar or myself and or myself have more experience with, you know, the way that a different. Government entity, Arcata and the county are navigating this and it might be helpful to weigh in on that. That being said, I don't really have the time right now to dedicate to it, but I'd be happy to kind of prompt some ideas to kick around. So is that something that I have to do as part of this public hearing or could I submit them to staff? What would be the best way to, to provide?
I think as, as part of the appointment of the ad hoc committee, which is what we agendize this as, you could. Uh, raise uh, what you would like them to be working on and advise them. And I think it'd be smartest to do it at this, you know, scheduled time versus in an email so that we're not violating the Brown Act.
Yeah, that makes sense. I um, wish I had written them all down. I like thought of a couple, but I'll try my best to think of them. And maybe if other members of the commission have other ones they'd like to bring forward for the subcommittee to discuss, we could talk about those now. I'll try and make a quick list as we discuss who will be on it.
I'm assuming that this came out of that last meeting with the, I had to sit out of it and so I was just listening to part of it, but then we lost the feed. So I just didn't, I don't know if there was already two people, if the two of you, Commissioner Lazar and Commissioner Benson were. Interested in, in.
Yeah, you know, I, I'll, I'll admit that I've been probably the most passionate about this, um, but I, but I, I'm just, my time at this. At this moment is just, I'm, I'm just not available, um, for, I don't have any more bandwidth, um, to, you know, to be on this committee. I'm, but like, um, Commissioner Freitas, I, I have some two desired outcomes that I would like to speak. That, that I, that I would hope the committee would address. It's, it's the guidance that I'm looking for as a commissioner. Um, to continue to, to vote on, on vacation rentals or short-term housing rentals. But I, I, I feel bad saying, like, taking my name out of the hat when I, when I, but I also, you know, I, I had a good talk with Adam Luna, the city attorney. And, you know, I think I'm, I think I may have too much opinion on this to be a good um, committee member.
I'm assuming part of it was that we wanted some direction as far as if there was going to be a cap and. Is that, I mean, what were your two objectives?
So the two desired outcomes, one is just informational. I just, I just kind of crave information around voting for this. And then policy recommendations would be the other part. And so the information that I'm really interested in, in having is, is, and I can give this to, to you later, I have it written here. But the ratio of the average number of short-term vacation rentals to the average number of long-term residential rentals. That's, that's the one that I'm interested in. You know, this, this ratio seems like it'd be really informative, more than the total number of. Of, than the, than the ratio of vacation rentals to the total number of properties in the city. What's available at any given time for someone to rent is more, is, is more that fundamental question. I know that's a super moving target, but just on, at the most sort of ballpark level. And then the other information that I'm desiring is sort of the impacts of vacation rentals on the rental market prices. And not only that, but home prices, you know, looking at a housing crisis that we're in. So those are, those are kind of my, my information pieces and the policies. That I'm looking, that I would like to see the, this um, working group or committee address was, you know, what, if any. And I'm, and I'm good with if, if any, or no changes, but, but what if any cap would be recommended on total short-term vacation rentals in the city of Eureka? Is, is it worth it to make a policy by percent or some number? And then the second policy rec would address what if any cap would be recommended for total short-term rentals in a given neighborhood? Which addresses proximity, like not having a cluster of too many of them in one neigh, neigh, neighborhood. And those are the, those are two things that I'd like to see come out of, of this in terms of recommendations for city councils. So, you know, a cap on total vacation rentals in the city and um, some kind of proximity guidance or policy. That's, that's it. Hope I didn't steal all your fire. Dila, I hope you have some other stuff in there too.
Um, well, yeah, not all of it, so don't worry about that, but um, should we decide who's going to be on it? Or do we want to just like get it all, hash it all out on the table and then decide who's going to be on it? I don't care, either way.
It seems like it'd be good for us to all share our thoughts regardless of who becomes the members of it, because that'll provide guidance to the subcommittee.
Okay, uh, cool, I'll go for it then. I think I got everything. Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Benson. I'm interested in discussing. A cap, I know that there's going to be work staff is going to do to, to feed into that. I still feel like we could start, you know, lay out the groundwork on maybe some criteria or some basic ideas. And then see how close we get to what staff's recommendation is. Um, Arcata set a cap of a hundred. We've met the cap, pretty much immediately we met the cap. Eureka's a little bit bigger, so maybe a cap of a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and fifty. I don't see any reason to go above that. But I also think it'd be good to have the subcommittee discuss potential exemptions from a cap, sort of incentives for historic properties. Or, you know, are there other reasons to exempt certain properties from the cap? Um, and Arcata, I think they originally had a exemption for owner occupancy on site, but there was just no way to. Regulate that or check on that on a long-term basis, so that's something to consider too, is what's actually like feasible to enforce over time. Um, and just considering staff capacity for that. Um, and I agree with the idea of density. Somebody's fee five foe thumbing somewhere, stamp, stamping around. I, it, I think that the one that this kind of, the, the permit that this whole conversation kind of came out of was a somewhat unique one. Um, and I do think it kind of spoke to maybe a need to address cases like that, you know, where there are nine houses on the block. And a third of them are vacation rentals or whatever the case was exactly. But it seems odd to not have any sort of structure for denial. So I think maybe, you know, if we're going to have this process where these permits can be appealed to us, like what is the point? If they, if, you know, we aren't being given any other findings to really play with. So maybe discussing findings of denial or some reason, you know, to, specific reasons to deny a permit. That staff can consider in advance and bring it to hearing, so it's not such a surprise to the applicant. Um, would be wise. I'm not sure exactly what that would look like, but it was just something I was thinking about. And I think maybe even just long-term a restructuring of the program. To remove the public hearing if it's going to be sort of the same circumstance over and over again, where we're, the planning commission is put in this position of upholding a decision. Without it really being that like different, anything unusual about it. Because I feel like we, it's kind of punishing to just sit up here and um, you know, be like, there isn't really anything unique about this one or this one. It'd be great if we could just see the unique circumstances and I don't know if there's a way to narrow it to that, but. But there's no need for a public hearing necessarily. Other programs don't include that. Um, and in Arcata, it isn't a minor use permit. It's more like a business license that if you stop operating, it doesn't run with the land. When you get a use permit, it does, and that seems kind of odd to me. Um, that we would create such a formalized structure because that way other people couldn't take the permit in future. If there was a cap, you know, it would just specifically run with these parcels that received it, so that seems kind of like an oddity to me. So I guess, yeah, in the short term, discussing a cap and. What would be the circumstances in which we could feel comfortable as a decision-making body recommending denial would be helpful. And then longer term, like maybe there are some things we could do to make the process more streamlined in general. So those were my thoughts.
And just to clarify, you mentioned staff's recommendation at a certain point during that, and this is going to be planning commission's recommendation to city council? Um, not staff's recommendation?
Yeah, I think what I was, um, intending to speak to was, I'm assuming there will be a recommendation on whether or not to do a cap once there is some work done. It sounded like when we discussed this a few months back, staff was like, it's too early to discuss a cap because we're waiting on some analysis to be done, at which point we would bring forward a recommendation as staff. Is that accurate?
Yes, staff's recommendation to city council thus far has been to follow the guidance in our housing element implementation measure regarding vacation rentals, which is first to undertake this vacation rental compliance effort, um, which we are in the process of now. So, um, would we recommend a cap at the end of that? I don't know. Currently, that's not something I would recommend, um, for various reasons. And I think the, that's just the general consensus on staff at this time.
Helpful to understand.
I think part of it is to, at least from my point of view, we feel like we're constantly mediating these neighbor disputes. Um, and then we get stuck, especially for, in example of the last one, of being in my neighborhood. And then you get, you know, you watch this go down and, and you don't really have a good reason to deny it, except for just to be like, hey, there's too many. So just having a little, I understand like the need to have just some more verbiage and some more denial reasons would be, would be great.
I guess on the denial, we did deny one. And so I guess I'm curious to know, was it an appeal file? Did it go to the council?
Nope.
Okay. I guess to Commissioner Freitas, I, you know, I, I, I think I, I can appreciate and understand what you're getting at as far as that sort of challenge of having the prerogative to deny projects and having guidance on when to use that outside of just the generalized findings that apply to all permit types. So having more specific findings in the code, is that sort of what you're envisioning?
Yeah, like, correct. And maybe that's not the way, the best way to go about it, and I haven't, you know, talked to a lawyer about it or anything. But, um, it seemed like there was definitely like a pain pressure point for the commission around density. So like that could be potentially a finding of denial, you know, like there is, you know, density of such a point that it will really begin to have a significant impact on neighborhood character, you know, or something like that. And maybe we could, you know, do ourselves a favor and do applicants and staff a favor and brainstorm, are there other cases, you know, other things we can think of that would be those pressure points and commit as a body to limiting denial to those points, you know? It might be impossible. You know, it might be like, well, we thought, we thought everything and now there is this new thing, but it would create some safeguards and it might be worth at least having the conversation with the subcommittee.
Would you and Commissioner Kraft like to create that subcommittee?
No.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I will, I will if, if nobody else wants to, I will do it, yes, but I don't want to. No offense to Commissioner Kraft. That would be fun, but a little busy at the moment.
Well, and this is certainly something we could come back to and revisit when people feel like they have more time. If now is not the, if, you know, no one has extra time to spend doing it, that's understandable.
I guess I'm willing to, um, I just, yeah, I, I am a little wary, um, but I think, I think it doesn't have to be a massive commitment of time. I, I would be curious, though, it would be, I think, helpful to be able to meet with staff, I think, you know, and get some of the, um, you know, full disclosure, I think, well, this was for a project I was working on in the county, but I was interested, I went to the planning department to find out and talked to Kristen and some of the folks with building, you know, to find out kind of what, once you've achieved, you've received the entitlement, what are you then subject to doing as far as inspections for public safety? How's that going? What are common issues that arise? Having that understanding of kind of the complexity of what faces people that are actually trying to become legitimized through our processes that we already have is, I think, helpful to understanding how far out we are into kind of bringing into the fold the population that already existed at the time that the regulations were put in place and are now being kind of rolled out. And I guess the, the other point I would say is, I think more likely to be, uh, feasible or practical in the short term would be something akin to not a cap, but, I mean, the cap provision's already written into the rules, so we don't have to like invent that. It's really when to pull that trigger and how to. Would be something like what you're talking about, um, Commissioner Freitas, as far as having that prerogative in certain situations where density does hit a certain level or where neighborhood character becomes affected, even if a density doesn't seem to be a big deal, you know, or where there's just kind of idiosyncrasies to the area, which, because I think this, it's, it's wrong to look at the city as a kind of a homogenous landscape. There's, there's issues that arise in different, you know, nooks and crannies and some have great carrying capacity and others don't. And where we see those friction points is where we should be able to kind of put checks on it, but right now it's unclear in the code. So, so having some principles embedded in the rules that, that I think put those findings and language into it so that it, it empowers the commission or the appeal body to deny in cases where it's appropriate and gives the public and applicants insight into what issues are significant enough to warrant that. You know, that's, I think, to me, more likely to be doable, because I could see the cap being just kind of, we're not ready yet, we haven't got enough in the compliance, but yet that principle or that concept still seems like it needs to be utilized, you know? So I don't know, does that make sense?
I want, I want to go back and just reiterate once, um, you know, the, the, the information that I think is so important, I, 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 I'm hesitant to just be pre-decisional about we, we need caps somehow. I, I want to see if there's actually harm being done, um, and, because there may be no harm being done. We, the, the way we're doing it, the city's doing it may be entirely reasonable and TOT goals are being met and, and, and we're not denying anyone housing. But that's why that information to me is so important. At any given day, are there, are there only nine rent, uh, long-term rentals available and a hundred vacation rentals available? Like, what does that mean for trying to deal with the housing crisis that, that, that we keep being told that, that we're in? And, and then, and, and how many houses are being converted to vacation rentals away from, from long-term rentals because there's more money in it? And then are we going to have people investing from out of the area in houses here specifically to be vacation rentals and like slowly impoverishing the short, the, the long-term rental market for workers that we were going to need for offshore wind and, you know, and, and on and on, um, you know, and, and so, but I, but I don't know if that's factual. I don't know how much housing prices or rental prices are going up. I read in the, in general literature on the internet, which, you know, I'm not going to give a lot of credence to, that, you know, every ten, sorry, every hundred houses that go into the rental market changes prices for houses by five percent. I mean, it's like there's this direct correlation, but, but this is all in my head and it's arbitrary and it's, it's on the internet and I kind of want to know if any of that stuff is true for us here. Is, do we actually have a problem to solve? And so to me, that information, part of it is, is worth, is really important. So we're not being arbitrary and fixing a problem that doesn't need to be fixed.
I guess my question, though, would be how, I think we would need to be more targeted for staff about how we expected that information to come back to us in an acceptable format, because it sounds to me like a really interesting and important question, but a really hard one to answer. And so I think if we were going to ask staff to prepare that for the subcommittee, we'd need to be clear with what the expectation was about what information we'd be expecting and what format that would take. It might be kind of a, we don't know what we don't know, you know, which is fair, but do you have any guidance?
Staff does not have the capacity to do an analysis of, of this right now. And I, I can, um, during the director report, I'll go over what my staffing levels are and all of our current initiatives, but, um, this will be your effort. Uh, I know it's a priority of yours and I, I understand why, you know, you're dealing with these and it's frustrating and it's something that's rising to the top of your priority list for that reason. But, um, until council directs us to focus on this over our, the other things they've, they've given us as priorities, I, we do not have the capacity to, um, to do that analysis for you.
I, I'm not surprised by that. I actually think one of these questions that Commissioner Benson raises is, uh, hard to get super accurate, but a reasonable estimate, I think is not that hard. That's the, the ratio question. Answering the question locally about price impacts would be almost impossible for anybody, regardless of capacity, in my view. And your internet research on, you know, what's the tendency out there may be the best we can do. You know, there probably are some wider things. I do think this is a place where, you know, the citizens that come into this meeting, um, want to be heard. And I think it's the priority for them that makes it a priority for us. So, you know, I, I mean, I think there are more interesting things to spend time on, but, um, I, you know, the, the passion, especially out of the unique circumstance that, that you brought up, Dila, uh, is what makes me interested in it. It's a citizen, clearly, they don't feel like they're being heard.
And so I think it's really productive of you guys to advocate to the city council to direct, to, to give them this recommendation that you feel like this should be more of a priority for staff than it is.
Um, a- and I'm willing to serve, I'm not demanding to serve. I, I am sensitive to what we've heard before from staff about, uh, you know, we're only so far in this compliance drive, uh, let us see what the number actually is. So I think I, I would take this on not feeling like we come back in sixty days with the answer. I mean, I think this may take a bit.
We can agendize like multiple discussions of it.
And I, and for me, the heart of it really is that neighborhood character more localized and whether it would be practical to implement something at a granular level, um, I don't know, but I think that's where the magic is, if we find the magic.
And I think honestly, you know, discussions about neighborhood character are super slippery anyway, you know, like I, I think it's helpful sometimes as a catch-all word, but I also want to avoid a situation where we can, the neighbors can use that as an argument for denial that might otherwise be acceptable. So even though, you know, that was language that I suggested, I think I would be really cautious about how we apply it. So, yeah, I'm not sure where, what's the best way to regulate these, but it would be awesome to think through if there's a way to do something that's cleaner than what we have now.
Do you have an end date in mind for the work you're doing now as far as the compliance drive?
No. We, you know, sent out the first batch of letters. We're now working with the city attorney for the second scarier letter, the, for the people that did not respond before we sent out our next batch of letters. We received, uh, seventeen thousand dollars from somebody in back taxes, so, uh, um, it seems like the host compliance system is doing a good job of accurately, um, estimating the amount of back TOTO based on their records. But yeah, uh, it's tough because I'm working with finance, um, on it and they're really spearheading it because they have to set up the payment packages. But we can bring Lane back to, to ask him, um, about it.
Maybe get an update next month before we start this committee to get a few more answers or have Lane come back and try to answer some questions?
Well, I can tell you, you know, we've sent out fifteen letters or fourteen letters and, um, let me look. We have, I looked at the host's compliance, um, and I took out, you know, all of the ones, oh, yeah. So we have sixty-nine legally authorized, a hundred and forty-two total identified on host compliance, forty-three of those I was able to match to our legal list. So we have somewhere between seventy-three and ninety-nine illegal ones and we've sent out fourteen letters so far. So that's the report.
You have a ways to go.
Yeah.
Is there, um, well, also for bringing back, um, the finance director, maybe even just like a quick memo would maybe be fine. I don't know if we need him to come and sit with us again, but if, unless he really wants to, unless he loves it.
Well, what is it, what information would you like from him, like just that? It's on his to-do list to work with our city attorney to get that second letter done. Once he does, we'll send that out and then we can send out our next round of fifteen letters.
Yeah, I'm just not sure, yeah, if we, what we need. And so it seems unnecessary maybe to have him come in person.
I mean, that could be another recommendation of your subcommittee for us to, uh, to, to convey to city council for us to hurry up on our compliance drive.
I mean, I'm wondering too, if we're making a mountain out of a molehill, so to speak, that the recommendations council could be really basic, that they're exactly that, like we'd like to see this compliance drive, uh, move forward and, you know, quicker. And also we would like there to be some consideration for a cap for density and really basic and keep it really easy and not, um, you know, not go over then what we need. So it's something that the committee could maybe bust out in a very short amount of time and not be overly wordy. Stay focused.
I s- I support that because I, I have a feeling and, and Commissioner Kraft also, you know, said this, is you could study this for nine months and come up with the same answer you could get in one meeting, you know? And it, this seems that if, if we're just trying to put this on the radar of city council in terms of this is an issue for us and we're looking for policy and guidance and we're looking that you support staff, um, with money or a new hire or whatever that, that makes it possible for them to have the capacity to address this. And I, I think honestly, I, I don't want to, I don't want to create, I don't want to be involved in creating policy. I want to, I want staff to do that and I just want to, you know, vote on it, um, and, and I want staff to be involved and I, and I'm hearing that you, you don't have a lot of capacity to do that. But, you know, we want to put the ball back into your court because, I mean, in, sometimes there's nothing worse than, you know, I, I don't want to be those people on high who deliver, you know, recommendations that aren't really blended with the reality of how staff works in the field. We don't want to be arbitrary in, in any way. So it, at some, that's how quickly can we get it back to you, but have a, have an impact with council relative to this is a serious issue for us as, um, as planning commissioners and we're looking for guidance.
Well, it seems to me like the, the end of the rainbow here, whatever, if we, if we go through this undertaking is a letter and a presentation as Kristen outlined, and it's not, you know, everything on a silver platter carefully designed and crafted to be embedded in the zoning regulations. It's really just, here's the stuff that we think is worthy of being, you know, looked into and developed and integrated into our regulatory framework because we're seeing the friction that comes with the lack of, you know, it's, it's, uh, absence and, and I think, you know, the numbers for me are particularly helpful. I mean, because, you know, when you start to kind of circumscribe the universe of how many of these are part of the baseline that we're trying to bring into compliance, how many more could emerge? Well, anyone could speculate about that. And the reality is all a hundred and forty-two could be like perfectly positioned on parcels where everybody has no problem with them, but we've already discovered that that's not the case. And in fact, we've discovered that some of them are quite concentrated and that's just the reality of the existing population that we're trying to bring into legitimacy. And given that, I, I think it'd be interesting particularly to study the distribution of those hundred and forty-two or the sixty-nine or, or all of them really, that, I mean, the ones we've pre-permitted versus the ones that are outstanding. Just to see, are there's a lot of clumping? And you showed some things, I think, during your presentation previously, but I think that would be helpful to kind of see how many clusters do we have? And you showed some things that I think during your presentation previously, but I think that would be helpful to kind of see how many clusters do we have? And, and what constitutes a cluster? Because I think we heard from neighborhoods what constitutes a cluster in certain cases. But fleshing that out a little bit more is, and, and I guess I would give an example just to kind of visualize what that might look like. With cannabis regulations, when the county did their first dispensary rules in the county, there was a policy in there about if there was another dispensary within 600 feet of your dispensary, didn't mean you didn't get a permit, but it meant that the commission was empowered to say, whoa, this could be a lot. You know, maybe we don't want to have that many in such a close area. And it, and it kind of provided an off ramp, but it didn't push the commission to have to do that. But it's embedded in the code. So having that conceptually in the zoning ordinance so that there's guidance and, you know, empowerment beyond just the basic broad findings that otherwise are harder to, you know, bring to, to bear. So I think that would be helpful. I don't know what you guys think, but it would be nice, I think, to have a, a visual representation of that population because that is our immediate target.
It kind of feels like we would have two, at least two ways to go about it. I mean, one would be set up a subcommittee, have them meet once to draft a letter that would be brought back to us. And then we could okay it or modify it and then they'd present it and then we'd be done. Or we could even potentially just discuss things now and elect somebody to write the letter and present it and be done. Or we could dig into some of these things like Commissioner Lazar is suggesting. And, you know, if Commissioner Lazar is willing to be on the subcommittee, that's where he's doing partially, so I'm supportive of that. But even then it could be one or two meetings, maybe one meeting with staff and one, you know, meeting to draft the letter. And then returning to the commission and keeping it. It sounds like what I'm hearing is an interest in not trying to drag this out too much and just getting kind of a alert to the council sooner rather than later about this being something that we're, you know, experiencing some discomfort with. And we would request it to be prioritized and for that to be directed to staff. So long story short, I'm supportive of that. I think that would be interesting.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, I'm willing to serve in the committee. I don't think we have to make a mountain out of a molehill.
That's great. It sounds like you and Commissioner Kraft are ready to go. So.
And I appreciate that.
If you'd like to pull up the motion, I will. Is there no motion? Do it needs to be made?
Public comment?
Oh. Okay, we'll open it up to public, public comment. And then we'll close it to public comment.
It's, according to your bylaws, it's the chair that appoints the subcommittee. It's not a vote.
Oh. The appointment has happened. Yeah, bividi, bobbidi, boop.
I wanted to say that I think we should have more, I know I, my mind was racing when I saw this on the agenda as to like what this would actually be involving. I had a good feeling and it's kind of shook out the way I expected, I think, to large, but for the public to be engaged, they have to know. And so I think before this gets re-agendized in a formal way where we're presenting something for the, the rest of the commission, I think we gotta get that into the record and available to the general public ahead of the meeting. And that would be my recommendation. And we can have a verbal report if we're like, hey, we're not quite ready and, you know, check in, here's the deal. But when, when we do bring some recommendations in a kind of informal fashion, I think we should have that in some form that would allow the public to be familiar with it before the meeting starts. Otherwise it's going to be hard for them to prepare.
Are you, like suggesting maybe a brief staff report and then the subcommittee's letter attached? Or what form are you envisioning that taking?
Well, I, I think staff report probably would be not an attractive thing, given the staff comments we heard earlier. I mean, I think the, the committee report could be, you know, penned by the, the subcommittee and it could just be a, a letter of some sort with a brief of, here's what we've got so far to share with you. And here's what we think might be worth, you know, where we think we're going and we'd like to get feedback or something. And then the public can weigh in in addition to the commission on what we're thinking. You know, that way I think it would help, it would help spawn more public engagement and empower the public to be able to participate. Because otherwise it's really hard to know. So, I don't know, does that sound okay?
I, I like that the public would get their say at some point on any recommendation that we sent to city council. That, that makes a lot of sense to me. I'm teaching a planning class and I can see a class project materializing here where, where I might be able to commit my class to do some, some outreach. Or, or surveying to get, you know, of people who are in, involved either legally or illegally in this and, and get some opinions for folks who won't, won't come here. Anyway, I could see if that were helpful, something for the committee to, to consider as well.
And I would assume that your recommendations aren't going to necessarily include changes to the code at this time, but more that we're kind of raising a flag to council to say, hey, this has become a consistent issue. And these are the things that we feel like need to be addressed.
Yeah, and I, I just, I, I guess all I'm saying is like, I can't imagine how the member of the public would know what to, what would, what was going to be talked about tonight any more than I did. And so the next time we agendize it, if we have like a formal report from the committee, I'm just saying, I think it'd be good to have that in, available to the commission and the public ahead of the meeting. And I'm not saying what Commissioner Benson's talking about wouldn't be a good exercise as well, but just in addition to that, you know, that's all.
Yeah, makes perfect sense to me. I was just going to make a joke and say, I also suggest we do a citywide mailer to make sure everyone really knows, but I thought, don't need to say that. But, but yeah, I like, I think that's a good idea.
And I do think in a way that we are really prepared and know what the feelings have been because we've watched it go down. The same conversation between neighbors happens every single time that that comes on our agenda, so. But yeah, I think you're saying just let's have an opportunity to present and then get some feedback from the public and then make a recommendation to council, and I think that's a good avenue to take. All right, anything else? Otherwise we will close this new business. It's closed. Did you want to give us some reports?
Sure, for director reports. We just lost our associate planner, Aubrey Richardson. She's moving to Ventura to be a planner there, closer to her family. And so we're currently in terms of planning, in building, we have four people. We have no redundancy. You know, one inspector, one building official, one plans examiner, and then the admin. In planning, we have our admin, we have two, two senior planners and two assistant planners. And we just hired another assistant planner with no previous experience in city planning. And so we also have a planning, part-time planning tech who's a Cal Poly Humboldt student and works for us part-time. And I'm looking for another part-time intern. We are getting inundated with our main bread and butter, which is environmental documents permitting. You know, there's Permit Streamlining Act, so we don't really control our workflow. We get, you know, ebbs and flows of permit applications. Right now it's really exciting in Eureka, we're getting a ton of permit applications, but that's really what we have to prioritize with our work. And then in terms of planning initiatives, at strategic visioning, they set 90-day deadlines for certain goals that are due in October. And one of them is getting 50% of the implementation plan for the coastal zoning code done by then. And the other one was doing a survey or putting together a survey, let me escape this, sorry, on neighborhood designations. Because currently we don't have official neighborhood names or boundaries in Eureka. And it's a community pride effort, so that's something we're figuring out how to do outreach on currently. And those were two of the 90-day deadlines. And we're also tabling at Friday Night Markets every Friday night. We've realized that we've adopted so many changes to our code and policies since 2019 that have really reduced so many regulatory barriers to housing. And people are just really unaware that your single-family lot could be subdivided and you could have six dwelling units on it now because of all the changes that have occurred. So we also have gotten a REAP sub-allocation from the county to work on creating a lot of promotional material. And the city is getting this new cool civic engagement website. And we're going to have project pages on that to promote housing. And then also get all that, the promotional material we create into a bilingual, to be translated. We're also creating, working on creating a loan program for ADU and junior ADU construction. Because now that we've removed all the regulatory barriers, we're realizing it's really like financing that is holding them up. The local coastal program comprehensive update, the annual inland zoning code update, which I'm hoping to bring to you all next month. We just, we've been doing this customer service survey that we put out to everybody who had engaged in the permitting process in the past two years, which ended up being thousands of people. We also got REAP sub-allocation money for this. And so now we've gotten back about 70 responses. They still are trickling in and we're going to analyze that and report back to city council on that. And then we have, we're dealing with now various develop, affordable housing developers that we've issued that are now going to be developing on city lots and helping them through the process, link, the Wiat. We're working on MOUs for the Sunset Height property and for the Earth Center property. And C to F, we got no responses to the RFP. Working on case closure there and figuring out next steps because we can't just give up. We have to show that we're continuing to put effort into getting an affordable developer on there. Who am I forgetting? The Wiat, the Link? Okay. The Vacation Rental Compliance Drive, the Regional Climate Action Plan. Those are all in our planning shop. The waterfront Eureka Plan is now ramping up because we've gotten so many responses to comments. So now we're sitting there and incorporating all those comments. And we're transitioning from Trackett to OpenGov so that all of our permits will be online instead of having to fill out a, a paper application. Principal Planner Getz was the one who knew all about that. So now our admin, Raylene, is doing the effort of putting over 60 permits into OpenGov out of Trackett. And we're trying to figure out how to transition that and it's become really hard, kind of a mess. Because we have some permits in it and some out. And we're working on our pro-housing designation. We submitted the application to HCD. We got a lot of comments back on how we could approve the application and so we're working on that now. So those are, oh, and city council has asked us to research design review and, and whether we should discontinue subjective design review, drive-throughs. They've also asked for research on that. And tomorrow I'm reporting on privacy in ADUs, which they've asked for research on. So that's the list of our current initiatives for our 4.5 planners.
Director Kenyon, I'm curious about the permits that you're seeing. What are the nature of the applications coming in?
Go ahead.
We are getting more vacation rentals in.
A lot of CDPCUPs that'll be coming to you.
Yeah, like redevelopment along the waterfront.
And along the highway.
And new uses, yeah, some new uses along 101 on Fourth and Fifth Streets. So that's good, some buildings that have been vacant for a while along 101, yeah, CUP, CDP.
The design review for new businesses.
Yep, yep.
A more commercial than residential.
We do have quite a few historic preservation applications in right now too. We have two going this month and next month there's three.
We actually have a lot of sign permits coming up now too and creative sign permits. So the, the sign regulations in the coastal zone were certified last year. And then earlier this year was a ban on digital signs, so then there was a big push to get signs in and now.
We have a few exciting city projects too that we are doing environmental review for, like the relocation of the Corporation Yard out of the flood hazard area. We'll be bringing that to you in October. And the Halverson Park, the park that's going in, we're going to have to do a CDP on that. That's going to be a director level CDP that we, we need to do in the next month.
I have one question for you. How many new staff are you budgeted for and authorized?
Well.
Tell me it's some number.
We were budgeted for a replacement principal planner and we chose to backfill at the assistant planner level. So I've, we've used all of our positions up, but we have room for promotion now.
That sounds like too much work for that much staff.
I just have a quick question and this might be the appropriate time to ask it, but I am wondering about some of the projects that we did approve, like on Fourth and Fifth. I'm thinking of like the old Sizzler building right across there from Jitterbean. And they were going to build a Starbucks and now it's just sitting for lease. And I'm just wondering when those projects come through and they say like, hey, Starbucks wants to get this permit. Is, are they not have commitment from those businesses to do that?
They are actively working through the building permit process with us. We've been working with them for months now. They've, they've applied for a building permit.
Yeah, I just see that the property's still listed for lease, like a sign just went up for lease on it.
I, yeah, maybe they haven't filled their second tenant spot.
Yeah, they knew the Starbucks was going in, but not the second.
And then we just got an application for the Sips Cafe property from a separate applicant. That's going to come to you guys, that's CDP, CUP.
China Buffet.
And the China Buffet will be coming to you next time.
So what would be the, that like process then for like the Starbucks of them to start breaking ground and get those buildings torn down?
They need their building permit.
Yeah, they keep changing their design and we keep pushing back because they don't want to come back to you guys for a design review modification. You know, Starbucks has come in and they're like, we want X, Y, and Z. And I'm like, you can't make substantive changes without going back to design review. So that's been part of the, the issue is working through design changes with them to keep them not significant. So they don't have to come back to you.
Thanks, that helps. I have people just that have asked like, oh, you see all these buildings sitting empty, what are you guys doing? So sometimes like, well, I think there's a Starbucks going there is what everyone else has read, but it has been sitting there and no work been getting on.
The head start you all approved across from the library is also, they've come in for building permits. Soraleaf has come in for building permits.
And for the Jack in the Box move to over there by Target as well?
Target is working, yes, we're having debates with them about their, whether they need to record, you know, the, the parking indenture. Yeah.
So things are moving forward on this?
They're all, we're working through all this, a very large load of building permits on things that you have permitted. So I don't think we're waiting on any building permits for any of the large projects that you, like discount cigarettes. We have a building permit for that too, like they all, it just takes a while from when, when you approve it to when like it finally, they finally break ground. But I can't think of one project that we don't have a building permit in the door for that you all have approved since I've been here.
More like two to three years after your approval to get something built, it seems like.
Oh geez, okay. They're super eyesore.
Yeah.
And getting more and more vandalized.
It's exciting that they're going to be, it's going to be huge when, when those get, that strip gets revitalized.
Yeah, good, so no real timeline, but it's moving through.
Yeah, I assume it's going to be soon because we've been working with them for quite a few months now. The Starbucks, the.
Yeah, yeah, that's Senior Planner Lisa Savage's project, but like Kristen said, oftentimes we're going back and forth with them because they want changes. Every four months it feels like. And so we have had to go back to you guys, I think for a modification already at least once for that Starbucks project. Didn't we? Are we, anyways, yes. It's a lot of work and a lot of behind the scenes to help push things forward.
Good, well, thanks for the clarification.
And I think Commissioner Freitas and I can both assure you that, I mean, if, if they hadn't applied for the building permit and it'd been crickets, then be cause for concern, but the fact they're working through that like final check is.
I just saw that new for lease sign go up and I was like, oh no.
No, you're right, I wondered the same thing, but it's, I'm encouraged by what I'm hearing.
Yeah, me too, thank you. All right, and other reports in communications, we'll count that as that. And adjournment, we're done.